The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, please take the roll.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Bowen?
Here.
Paratchek?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Shilling?
Here.
All right, do we have any actions on the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Paratchek?
Yes.
Shilling?
Yes.
How about for the minutes from the seven one twenty twenty five meeting? Any action from the council?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from seven one twenty twenty five. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Shilling?
Yes.
Paratchek?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Abstain.
Uh, Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right. Bills for payment are in your packet. Any action from the council on the bills?
I have a question regarding late fees due to rescheduled council meeting. Is there a way around that? Is there an amount that you are able to pay without it being approved bill to avoid that in future instances?
It's on the credit card.
It's on the credit card.
Yeah.
I understand. I'm just wondering, is there a workaround? Or is that just the nature of a, that's a downside? It's a hidden expense to a rescheduled meeting perhaps.
I mean, we could treat it like a prepaid bill. You know, I could mark it, you know, if a meeting gets rescheduled to pay it ahead of time and then it would come on the prepaid list, you know, you're basically approving that. I guess that would be a way to get around it.
I guess it comes down to how comfortable are you doing prepaid, you know, versus the late fees. So.
I think for a rescheduled meeting, that makes sense.
Um, how many, how many was? Was it just two?
Yeah, it was just on the credit card.
Yeah.
We incurred a couple from Sioux Valley, but they're waiving those.
Yeah, there's, I would think you probably have never had a late fee in the last few years, at least for, for this one. They wouldn't waive it though? Maybe, if you didn't call and ask, that's fine.
Yeah, I guess I didn't.
No worries, no worries. I'm not trying to put you on the spot here.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I sure can.
I'm just saying, there are, it was, I was, didn't think about that when we rescheduled the meeting, what that could have.
Things that affect like the liquor license.
Yes.
You don't hear it, it's why you don't realize you have it all.
Yes, exactly. Enough said.
All right, anything else or any action from the council on the bills?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Paratchek?
Yes.
Shilling?
Yes.
All right, public comment? Anything that's not on the agenda that anybody would like to address? Mr. Scott?
Yeah, I would like to request be on the agenda, the next agenda, in regards to the twenty twenty six CIP and how it may affect the property owners of Kiliac. Okay?
Yep. Well, you know, we, we're gonna talk a little bit about that tonight. It's a water study, it's on there. Okay.
Are we, when do we normally address the CIP?
We look at it at much time. We're actually at our next meeting with ISG staff, meaning we're gonna kind of review it internally and I'd like to present that to you guys at much.
So what specifically are you after, Scott?
Just kind of what we're talking about there, you know, and I really don't want to go into specifics right now.
Okay.
It's just kind of a general bantering. Obviously, I'll collect some data if I can hear from this gentleman that here tonight on just a couple of things that there are some concerns and, and really that's.
Okay. Uh, let's make known to that and then as we get closer to the next meeting, we'll discuss that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we will move forward. Special event application, South Main Block Party on August ninth. In the packet?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Shilling?
Yes.
Paratchek?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right. Next up is special event license Converse Wine Company for the July thirty one market. We did this last month. They've been applying every month so they can serve wine slushies, I believe, right?
Can I, can I pause for a moment?
Yes, pause.
Back up to this.
Okay.
Because it doesn't really address how the street closure is going to be administered. Craig, is the city staff willing to close that off from?
We're planning on it.
I assume so. We're gonna make sure that we have addressed it.
I'll print it off tomorrow and put it up on the board with the rest.
Sounds good. And I assume that traffic can just use Tessa.
Nicholson's or not Nicholson's, but Western's open now too, so.
True, true.
We normally block.
Yeah, usually lay them in the.
We bring them there instead of now and you guys.
And then you guys take them down too.
Yep.
So we'll, you have to put them up and take them down by.
Perfect. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Not our first rodeo.
No, I know. And I thought it was addressed in here the first time.
Wait, I didn't know it was a rodeo. Maybe we better look at this deal.
You can have no livestock in town. No, I just, I thought it was addressed and then I went back and read it and it didn't address it. So, thank you.
You guys deserve a party for all the traffic.
Yeah.
Totally. So, thank you.
Night and day.
Putting up with us.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, the traffic is so much better right now. Everybody's like, they're so excited.
Yeah, your street back.
Yeah.
People are back around it in the streets. All right, let's move back down to the Converse Wine Special Packaged Liquor License or License for Converse Wine Company for the market on the thirty first.
Motion to approve special package wine license for Converse Wine Company.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Paratchek?
Yes.
Shilling?
Yes.
All right, next up, resolution twenty twenty five dash six, accept public infrastructure for Maple Pass Avenue and Oakley Street. This is typically when we get to get a road put in and everybody says it's okay, we pass a resolution to accept it as a city street.
Right, and this is formally after we accept it, the city then takes over the maintenance and the care and the ongoing costs of not only the street, but the associated structure, water, sewer, maples, just basically everything gets turned over to the city. ISG and staff has gone through, they've done their inspections, everything meets the city's design standard and criteria, they've done all the punch list items, so we're at the point where we can take it over now.
Walk me through how those inspections take place because the city isn't involved with that development of that street. Does that developer and that contractor allow ISG onsite to inspect it? Perfect.
Yeah, we do all the same inspections that we do on our own projects.
Great, okay.
Just a dumb question, but I bring it up because we're talking about streets. We're putting, there's gonna be a sidewalk on this street, right? There's gonna be a sidewalk.
It's developed.
Correct.
The, the, once the site is developed, then it goes up or whatever. Maybe that's the point of the sidewalk, is it?
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Motion to, did we have a motion already?
No.
No, I don't think we did.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash six, accept public infrastructure for Maple Pass Avenue and Oakley Street.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none will vote. Shilling?
Yes.
Paratchek?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right. That gets us through those. We'll go to reports. First up, Fire Chief Brian Schumacher. Live and well in here?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, councilors.
Evening.
What do you call it?
Quarterly.
Quarterly or quarterly, I guess, so. So just, you know, touching base what I said out, you know, call by really maintaining steady month to month, you know, just slight ups and downs, but net ballpark of thirty total calls a month, anywhere from forty to fifty percent of those calls in the city here, so. So that trends pretty steady, what they call volume. Training wise, EMS, we're working on hemorrhage control, fluid resuscitation, and trauma triage this month. Fireside, working on rapid intervention crew training. And joint, joint training, we train our cadet program, so that's a new thing that's kicking off on the department. We're bringing some cadets onboard. We have three approved cadets we're starting out with. They have to be at least sixteen years of age, still in high school. Allows them to get, I'll say their fingers wet on a little fire EMS rescue side of things to hopefully develop a longer term pool of applicants into the fire department full time. Been a lot of other communities around the upper Midwest that had a lot of success with the cadet programs and maintaining their staffing in that way, so this is our first adventure in that, so.
Cool.
Is there, is there a limit as to how many cadets enter the program or?
We don't have a set limit. We do have an interview process. They have to meet some criteria because they're in school, you know, there's some academic requirements, attendance requirements, parents have to be onboard. School system is very supportive. The superintendent, he is all for the program. He's a huge supporter for it, so we're trying to kind of grow it slow. We don't want to get too many in right away. We want to make sure we're adjusting the program on the fly as needed to make sure these cadets stay, stay safe in what they're doing, both mentally and physically, but also, you know, keeping them interested and hopefully their interest will spark interest of friends and other counterparts in the program, so.
Awesome. You mentioned that kind of just briefly, mental health there. What, how do you, how do you guys do, like, you guys see a lot of stuff, obviously?
That's an understatement.
Yeah, right. So, so how do you, how do you deal with those folks that see something that they don't necessarily like?
We have a lot of different resources. We, we have a couple chaplains onboard with the department, first line of defense. Through our work comp, we have essentially free services available for our staff if they want to go see a counselor of some sort and maintain privacy. We also have peer counseling groups if we get into a really bad incident or we'll have a critical incidents press briefing for those involved in that. So we, we have a lot of different avenues, both on an individual and team basis, we deal with the, the mental side of all these calls.
Gotcha. Just curious.
How's that new truck?
Come along great. I said we're still fine tuning how we're monitoring equipment, still doing a lot of training on it, but it's gonna be an asset that serves the community well for a lot of years, so.
Awesome. Any other questions for the chief?
Public safety day is coming up?
Public safety day is coming up, end of August here, so it's gonna be a big event. Even additional vendors or display items going on there. Again, look for big crowds there. It's always been a very popular activity with the community. Hopefully, all those attending will learn a little bit of something as they're going in there to keep themselves safe. It's really meant to be a big prevention activity that, you know, everybody, kids, adults can learn something on how to keep themselves safe, so. Also, a couple other activities. Tomorrow night, we'll have a new engine down to the block party in town. It'll be down at Farmer's Market the end of July here, so, you know, wanting to get the truck out, we want the community to see it and see what everybody in the community has supported and the equipment they may happen to help keep them safe, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, anything else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, chief.
All right, next up, code enforcement building inspector report from Kyle. We decided last month to ask Kyle to come to one meeting a month to give us a report to the council. Kind of something new. Kyle, fire away.
I believe my code enforcement reports are in your packet and spoke with Paul. If you have any questions on the building side, you can ask me as well.
I've got a question, Kyle, just because I was riding with my kids downtown, kind of on, going on Main Street. There's a sidewalk that's been an issue. Actually, I think a gal in town tripped on that sidewalk about a year ago. I mean, you probably know which one I'm talking about, the one, it's on Main Street, it's on the west side here, just north of second, maybe just north of third. The sidewalk has had that big of a, I don't know, that big of a difference in it for years. And I'm like, holy smokes, like, you know, I see my kid riding a bike on it, he's gotta go over into the grass, you know, the younger one with training wheels, because he'll, he'll fall on that. So I see a lot of tall weed saw grasses, all of those things. That's great. Doesn't really pose a safety risk. But we also have sidewalk, and this is part of a larger, larger conversation, but I'm curious, like, when was the last time you enforced this, or not enforced, but at least wrote, like, are we, I guess, following our ordinances and, and trying to enforce that there's like major sidewalk issues?
My understanding with that is I believe that would be the liability of a property owner to get it fixed. As far as on the city side, I have only really enforced, you know, need to fix new, making sure it's correct with radiator, storm removal, obviously, in winter time, but if it's bad enough, I could probably send a letter, just to let them know.
I think, because I, you know which one I'm talking about, Mayor.
Yeah, I know, so I'm, yeah.
It's not good.
What street was it again?
I think it's, if you just.
It's either second or third.
Second or third.
Between third and fourth on Main.
Yeah, on the west side, and it's, it's been a problem for years and I'm finally like.
But this is an order, this is an order, because we do not have it in our ordinance right now.
We don't have any sidewalk maintenance in our ordinance?
To force them to fix it, correct?
No, basically, we're required to do.
It's all called back in the state ordinance.
Every year, and we, we do it by wards, so we do it like every three years, so every year, we'll do one of the wards. We will go through if there's deficiencies in it. We have a policy, a sidewalk policy in place. If there's deficiencies in place, we notify the property owner, basically noting, you know, here's your problems with your sidewalk, you know, and, and we'll spell out, you know, whatever it is. It is your liability and your risk, you know. They can fix it, we ask them to fix it, but we don't mandate that they fixed it.
So they can have a sidewalk sticking up that far out of the ground? It can be broken, there's no.
Sidewalks, veteran chunks.
I was gonna say.
Sidewalks, falling with weeds.
Yeah, but here's the thing.
Like I said, it's, it's a bigger picture, like we, we talked about.
Yeah, this is gonna be a big ordinance change.
I understand, this is like.
Needs an ordinance change, yeah.
This thing needs to be fixed, because we had a lady fall and I think she had to get stitched. I'm just saying in.
And there's other places, yeah.
I didn't realize that. I thought we had an ordinance, so I would like to see that.
They have a policy in place.
Scott can make, you know, mention, I would like to see that on the next agenda, to get some type of ordinance. I don't want us to go crazy with it, but like, this thing's a safety issue.
Don't think the council's ever to pass, and we did that probably, I don't know, six, seven, eight, I don't know, time flies. We've been doing it for a few years. We've done every ward twice now.
Can we at least target that sidewalk, say, hey, this is, we had somebody trip and fall on. I, I just, I would like to make a request to make that homeowner, homeowner know, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely sent out another letter.
If I'm on my own, more than stuff, you know.
And that is under state law. It's in our liability a year ago. We're probably a little late on that.
Right. Tom, have you taken any look at that, our stuff yet, Tom?
No, I can't.
Because I know we talked about it.
Have you ever noticed that anyone actually fixes their sidewalk with an application?
Yep, yep, somehow.
Oh, good.
And they'll notify us after words that let us know, hey, we got the letter, we have corrected it, and yeah, it's surprising that people.
Especially with the ordinance.
Right, yeah. Like I said, they'll hold back on their liability though. I mean, and that is in state law.
Is it the same with pool barriers? I saw that on here, and is it the same as far as having a fence around your pool?
That's a, that's a code building.
The pool code, that's a property maintenance code, code.
So we do enforce that?
Yes, because we've adopted it, so, yeah.
So then I see like this one on here that says pool barrier. Then how long do they have before they put the barrier around?
So Kyle gives them a timeframe, yeah, to come up to code and then goes and reasons specs, and then hopefully they comply. If they don't, they get a fine and we go down our procedure.
See, a pool barrier is kind of a gray area. Some areas, some jurisdictions, I don't know many counties this way. You take the ladder out of the pool, the pool walls itself constitute the fence, just kind of.
It's like so high.
If it's over four feet. The pool's four feet deep or more, yeah.
But no ladder in it.
You're talking above ground, right?
Yeah.
Above ground, I might have missed that part, sorry.
Yeah, they got, they got a different story.
They got dingram, they have to have a fence.
Yeah, it's part of the building. I will say, Kyle, you got one of the toughest jobs in the city, so I, you know, I, I don't hear much from folks, and when I do, that's, you're, you're typically in the right, so just say, keep up the good work. We're on the right track, you know?
What's our policy on blowing grass into the street?
It's whole stuff.
We came, we wanted to here just so we could gash you up a little bit.
Same as going snow into the street.
Keep up the good work. You know, as a former motorcyclist, blowing grass in the street is a sore point for me too.
I hear you.
It's tough to catch, though.
We don't necessarily like having that all in our storm sewers, do we?
No, we don't want.
Yeah. Yeah, that seems to be, there's some, there's some places where that's a, that's an issue.
They should just mulch. Side discharge.
There's a lot of them here that are over eight inches. They're gonna have a hard time mulching.
Yeah. You might have to bail.
City dumb.
All right.
Multiple passes.
So on the building side, anything that we need to know that looks like we got a lot of, looks like you're following a few projects. That's, that's good.
There's a lot going on in the city.
That's good. Anybody else got any questions or comments for Kyle? We appreciate you coming and we, we know, like Ryan said, I agree. We know you have kind of a, that's a tough spot, but.
And if you have concerns about any specific properties, you know, just get ahold of Kyle and email him or me or whatever, and yeah, we can follow up right away with them, so.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to the city engineer report, the most exciting time of the evening.
Good evening.
Michael.
Mayor.
I'll call you the right name tonight.
Appreciate that, thank you. Reports in front of you. A few quick updates on the general engineering side of things. Slurry seal, this year's slurry seal will begin this Thursday, and should go Thursday, Friday this week, and then we'll be done slurry sealing. On the project side, the water resource recovery facility did get the access roadway paved, so that'll be nice. That's usually a good indicator that a lot of the heavy work is wrapping up. Additionally, we did punch walk the gravel line today, so there's a few, few items for the contractor to fix there, and then that won't be pretty well, that portion will be pretty well closed out. Anticipated having substantial completion of the operations building mid-August, and then followed, following that is some equipment startup within that facility, so startups moving on very well. Moving on to the Highway thirty eight Water Main Extension, real quick, once the, once seed establishes and reaches that seventy percent germination that's required by our DNR permit, that product will be closed out. On Western Avenue, as you may have noticed, phase one roadway is open, phase two removals have been completed. Utility installation is planned to begin in that phase two boundary tomorrow. Take a couple weeks and then move right into, to grading operations and paving. So that one goes a little quicker than the first now that kind of got the flow of things going. There will be some work that occurs within that phase one boundary, mainly some topsoil between the sidewalk and the roadway there. As that occurs, the contractor will cone off those areas there if they have that lane to work in while still maintaining two lanes of traffic through there. So they'll, we'll keep it safe, but there, there's still a little bit to, to do there.
Before we move on, Justin, did you ever talk to Lonnie about a possible sign for Dairy Queen?
No, I didn't get a hold of Lonnie. I talked to some other businesses in that area, though, just in terms of signage to get to and from, calling anything that eastern portion. The other business didn't see it necessary at this point, but the line of communication is open there. It is needed to look at some additional signage up. Additionally, there was some concern Lonnie brought to me last week just on understanding that oval intersection. So right now, half of that's open, half of that's closed. That was due as required, just to make sure we maintain traffic through there during phase one. So as you guys recall, phase one traffic was going down the creasman, using that half. Now it's flipped over. We had our progress meeting with the contractor today, and they're gonna work on, once they get some of that storm sewer utilities out of that intersection, focus on getting that intersection paved. So that will likely be paved prior to all the work getting completed this out, and then we'll essentially have that three-way open up there. So you will be able to go right through on oval, bulk directions are toward north, and will still be closed on the south. So what that'll do is provide better access to Dairy Queen, and then if necessary, go down to Grill Cut as well, so.
The reason I ask about sign, because I went out there tonight to grab a signage. So I cut up oval, the creasman, and we have a barricade there that says, go through traffic.
Yes.
At the end. And it made me think, this would probably be a great sign to say Dairy Queen, hey, something to, if we needed that, or.
Absolutely.
Dairy K, Dairy Queen and exit three eighty seven Plaza, whatever.
Yeah.
But that would maybe be a great place to have, that was my thought. That's why I bring that.
And I'll play it out with Lonnie whenever he gets me a call back or I'll call him again tomorrow and just touch base, and if we need him on, I'd invite him. So, like I said, he's given me a call already, so if he has something on top of his mind, I'm like, he's pretty good to give me a call.
Okay. One of the other comments I think we discussed was traffic down that frontage road.
Correct.
Go fast.
So that was one thing that Grill Cut's brought up to me, as they observed, which I think is, is valid. So we're gonna get some signage up there, additional signage up there, because especially if we do open up that oval intersection, there will inherently be more traffic that goes along that frontage road, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Just making sure we get some signage in there. We all know signage doesn't always prevent them, but just trying to get some of those preventative measures up in place. And that will just continue to exert a, again, Lori has my contact, and she's gonna monitor that from her perspective. We'll see it from ours and just modify as needed, so.
So I ran through the drive, drive-through, so that's why I bring that up, because you, you don't get very far past Dairy Queen and you're right there.
Correct.
And that, that was my concern. That's why I break, that's why I wanted to bring that up, because it, it made me wonder, if somebody's not paying attention or they're starting to eat their french fries, they're gonna fall out in front of somebody.
Absolutely.
And I don't know, I don't, I honestly don't know if a stop sign on each side is gonna, gonna make a difference.
It'll be on private property too, so.
Exactly. We can't go in there and probably put a stop sign up. Right? Anyway, just a thought.
So, you know, going back to that point with private property in there, that was why we have that real close sign, go through traffic.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay.
And that's.
Oh, so I was technically breaking the.
Wow.
I mean, it's for your customers only. We're trying to keep the general traffic from your side through there just for shortcut.
So we're not gonna directly.
Did you go that way? Yeah, that's the only way you can go. Yeah, okay. When you talk to Lonnie, I would be interested to know what he has to say, if he has any thoughts about that.
Yep.
Because when I went down there tonight, I purposely looked and I thought, okay, maybe this would make some sense. Okay, anyway, okay.
I remember looking into it at the beginning of the project.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Doing that and it was brought up by the signage guys that that's typically up to the businesses if they want signs up. So that's why I don't think we want to go any further with it at that time.
Okay.
Yeah. And just, you know, touching base with those guys, understanding, you know, I generally talk to most of them at least once a week, just understand what they're seeing on the pulse, you know, if you guys need help, do you guys need this, that, understanding. And I haven't got any input at this moment, understanding that things may change and if it does, then we'll just adjust to that and, and help try to meet their needs, so.
Okay.
With the detour there on Opel and on Rude, that intersection is, I remember that was rebuilt here a few years ago, it seems like it's awfully tall. Is that correct or is it moving again?
You're talking at Rude and Opel?
Yeah.
I guess I haven't paid attention, I could go down and check that out, look at it. I know at Diamond and Rude, we slurry sealed just that 100 feet or 200 feet in there last year just to help protect that road.
Yeah.
So I'll have to look and see if that looks like it's moving, it shouldn't be, because like I said, they milled it all down intact, you know, so it's.
Yeah, that intersection just rises.
Wasn't that, didn't we have to do something at that end?
It wasn't settling previously, no, it was rising.
The road was, the, the two lifts weren't sticking and they're pushing.
Okay. So what's that been, two, three years?
It's been probably five years.
The road itself seems to be holding together well, but.
And you might be feeling the, I know there was high in there just to get the water away from the intersection, pushed to the storm sewers on both sides.
Yeah.
But some of that, I mean, if you're, if you're feeling it over a storm sewer, something's settling in there again.
Right, yeah.
Right. Maybe it's, it's nothing, I don't know that I can think of another intersection in town similar to.
I know that was high from.
From day one.
From when they redid it.
Sure.
And that was part of the design was to build that up there so that water would go in two different directions. Before that, you know, the road, future road going there, that was the low spot in it to catch all that water.
Yeah, that's right. That road was supposed to go north to Mickelson, wasn't it, at one time, yeah. Okay, thank you for the refresher.
All right, sorry. Fire away.
Park plan, Parkmaster Plan, final draft was due with city staff last week, making those updates and the intent of that is to have the planning and zoning board, Parks Board, and then ultimately come to city council for acceptance, just to allow those other entities to have their review as it does impact their roles and what they're working towards. Swenson Park is out to bid, bidding next Thursday the 24th to get that in the paper and it is posted at the link in your report.
This might not be the appropriate time. So the national softball is playing this week, correct?
Next week.
Next week. And we're not gonna, nowhere near to have a parking lot, so there, it's gonna be a free-for-all, right?
It's gonna be tough out there.
Basically. I don't know how else to say it.
We're gonna have to put, we'll put some barricade fence up along the township area, so that people's driving on the township.
Okay.
At least on the, from the park side, I mean, we can't stop going the driveway.
Because I've heard there could be quite a number of people out here.
I'm actually getting together with Greg on Thursday, going to talk about possibly ways in Water Park, you know, something like that, look at some options, so. Because we don't want them on the soccer fields.
Right.
And there's really, it's limited out there, I know what we got for Park.
Right.
I know like at Riverdale in Sioux Falls, there's never enough parking there and they use that grassy area, they put up just the pounding poles with plastic flags for the day.
Thing is, our, our grassy area goes from, right from the road basically up a hill to the soccer field, so there's really no parking there.
That's where you might want to fence it off or something like that.
Yeah, and then going back to the east, it's right away into those drainage ditches, so we don't want them in there in case we get some moisture, they'll get stuck down in there. And then the only other spot we got, we could let them go back into that, that little road that we kind of built back and we got some piles back and we fenced some of that off and give a little bit more of them there, but it's gonna be limited. They might have to park on oaks and walk in there, maybe get permission from the Velma Corporation to walk across their property or something, or talk to school about possible busing, I'm not sure. I'll talk to Greg about it and see, see what comes up.
Okay, I got another thing I want to talk to you about, but I'll do it during your report, Greg. Okay, sorry.
It's not his report right now?
No, we're on, so, and Michael.
Okay.
Michael, so.
He kind of got kidnapped there for a second.
With that link, the link, it's a link to nowhere unless, at least as far as I can tell, unless you are signed up. So with Quest CDN, you have to be registered to actually see that.
Yeah, so we do put it in plan rooms and self-code as well to get that and then residents within state self-code can request plans on some, for a free.
And then it's on.
Off the base of return, so.
Through the Mini-HA Messenger, but I believe to see it in the Mini-HA Messenger, you also need to be a subscriber.
To get it from Quest, yes, but my, my contact information wasn't that posting, so if, if they do not have a Quest account, they can, they can contact me and receive my stuff.
Just running it through the bases, you know, we only want to do it once.
We also, we'll also try to shoot it out to, to just some of the contractors that we know that we potentially did on this project, the prior contractors anyways, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
And the last on the report is the WFF drainage study portion, before we get there, any other questions on, I mean, any of the other items in your report?
Anybody got any other questions for Michael before we moved on to the Kelly Avenue project? Doesn't sound like it, Michael, fire away.
So in your packet is a memo as well as a few maps and a cost estimate just of our progress so far on the Kelly Avenue drainage study. So essentially, our existing conditions model has been run and those are the first two maps that you're seeing there, one of which is a flooding map which shows the depth of that runoff, and then the second is an inundation map which shows the length of time that those areas remain inundated or having a substantial amount of standing water, which we have set at a tenth of a foot, so an inch and a quarter. To note, these maps are shown for the 100-year event. Moving on to the next couple of items, since there are sanitary and water main improvements that Craig has identified there, the next portion is just a roadway, water and sanitary sewer concept conceptual layout, just showing those, for those improvements. Really intent with that is to separate them from the storm sewer as opposed to recreating them with every different iteration or option of the storm sewer there. So concepts provided, construction costs for just the roadway water and sewers approximately 1.3, which is in line with what we have provided in previous years for the, for the improvements. Following that is a residence impacts map and really what this does, what this is, is our preliminary analysis of improvements that we believe will improve the drainage concerns in the area. On that map, there are a few different options with cost, each with their own drawbacks, whether it be fence removals, easements, further coordination of residents or the schools, as well as, it's just, just different things that we can do. So green are typically more feasible, red are other options, but less feasible for various reasons. One thing to note is the storm pipes shown on the, on that map are for the 10-year design. Within the storm infrastructure design, typically don't design to the major events, as you see really diminishing returns with that cost, just due to the frequency of that event. So design to the 10-year provides additional capacity over cities' design standards, which is typically the five here, but with that, will lead to have consideration for emergency overflow routes, because you'll never design to larger stormages, so you always have to account for that. Additionally, following that map, there were, there were items that we considered, but mixed out just due to their feasibility, one of which was outletting the roadway drains to the north ditch of Railroad Street. That was looked at just to try to save some of the pipeline. Reason that one was infeasible is just there's not enough fall from the roadway, from the depth of the intakes in that roadway to the ditch, just it would drain, you know, a very, very flat or bad ridge drain pipe. The second one was, was looking at a pond to try to control the rate of that water and really that one was kind of ruled out as infeasible just since there is little area for a pond and so we would need to convey it to a pond and at that point, constructing a pond just to convey it out of the pond would be a waste of cost, really. So that's a very high level of where we're at now. Looking ahead, we'll continue to evaluate alternatives, run these in the 2D models, so intent is, is with the alternate or options that we provided and continue to develop, is run that through the modeling software so you can see the impacts on those maps, the flooding, the inundation map, see how those improvements reduce the flooding in the area and then wrap that all into a final report, which will be much more comprehensive than this model that you've been providing.
That is a lot.
When do you anticipate the report to be done?
Our, our goal is to have, to provide the report so that you have at least a, a week to review prior to budget, whenever that is set, which is kind of what really spurred this study, maybe going back a couple of months. It was a really good conversation when we brought this up to you guys. I'm looking at this project as we have identified on the cap improvement plan and it just seems like you kind of went back year to year to year. So our goal this year was to get this study in place, understand what we can do with the storm sewer, get some of those cost and funding options presented to you guys to understand what we wanted to move forward with this project next year or, you know, call it five years down the road, whatever that may be. So we're trying to have that scheduled completed, we'll at least have all the data, draft reports, hopefully final report, but more than enough information to make some informed decisions and help, help provide the council information regarding this project and solutions.
And it is on the CIP for next year, correct? No. Do we know that?
It's on the CIP, I'm not sure if it's next year or no.
I think we've moved it out a couple of times, probably.
We've moved it a few times.
We moved it up, we moved it down.
So it is 2026.
It is on for 2026.
I don't think enough budget amount.
Then we have a design budget for next year, storm study this year, design next year, I think this is.
Yeah, because this isn't sewer and water, this is just the storm.
This is just storm, right.
This isn't replacing the sewer and water, this, and is this even taking care of the street? Nothing?
Well, so those cost estimates do include everything in there, because that was the big point of the conference.
Okay, this is everything.
Yes, yeah. Because we wanted to make sure we were looking at it, you know, we had some placeholders for storm sewer in a prior to, right, understanding we wouldn't be a storm sewer study to get a little bit more, you know, and that's what this is doing, it's confirming those storm sewer numbers, the water, same as the area, I'm going to say pretty standard, there's not going to be significant changes in regards to that design. You will note in there, there may be some deviations from some design standards potentially when we get to that point, just based on right of way, how much room we got to play in that area at one time. So all those options would be presented and we'll make some more, more formal conversations and decisions on those at that point.
I got a question for Scott.
Sure.
And I don't travel down Kelly Avenue too much, or how long have you lived in that area for?
25 years.
How big of an issue is it with the stormwater?
It is, it is an issue and I've seen it, well, since 20, 25 years ago. And so I greatly appreciate, you know, you guys recognizing this, that, you know, obviously we've dealt with ramifications of the drainage with people down, downstream, Tom Mortland, Tom Levino, so on and so forth. And so it is going to be and continue to be an issue and obviously it affects the infrastructure of, of the street and, and in some cases, private property. So, and, and thank you for asking that question. Could I, you know, we can't hear, could I hear you say it, just, just storm sewer only?
No, we, we would have had.
The whole deal.
That's the whole, yeah, and that's what I thought, I just wanted to be sure to tell.
This, this study only shows the storm.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, okay, all right.
So back to your initial question you asked earlier, Scott, that you want to talk, talk about this in relation to the CIP. What is your, before we, what's your thoughts? Just give me a quick rundown of what you're thinking.
Well, I, I honestly don't want to speak on behalf of everyone on Kelly Avenue, you know, I mean, I can't do that. And actually, we'd kind of like to have a chance and if nothing else, bring you some data so that you have a consensus on what the, what the, what the consensus is down the street. We met with my neighbor across the street and, and, you know, we've chatted about it, we've seen it many times.
Yeah.
And I thought you guys are up towards Second Street, so you're at the top.
Yeah, we're, we're swimming in high cotton there.
Yeah, rather than the residents who are down at the bottom.
Literally.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then so with that reconstruction, then, I can only assume if you're going after sewer, that you're going to be, you know, I understand you have to, you have to tear it up, I mean, you're gonna have to tear it up and store it, you know. But it's gonna get down to the point where you're putting in new PVC for everything right down, like, because I saw your, your graph, necessary to pull that up on there, is that possible? You don't have, I want you, but, but I can see where, where you're actually, is it my understanding that if you're going to get to that, that, that middle of the road pipe, you're gonna have to go six feet deeper, if not more, right? Yeah, okay, that's what, because I, when Levino was having his issue earlier this year, I wanted to walk down there and my, holy cow, that pipe is way down there, you know, and, and so, you know, and then like I say, I, I can say that, I think we all know what's needed and, and then we appreciate the consideration for doing that.
So I would say, Scott, if you can, I have no problem putting you on the agenda, if you can bring us some information or talk to some of your neighbors and we, by all means, if, if they want to come and talk about it, we'll be, we'll talk about it.
Sure.
Because we know this is a big, this is a big project for a really very limited number of houses.
Yeah.
Is that, I, I mean, that's about the easiest way to say it. It's a big project for a little, for not a lot of houses.
Yeah, and like you said, it's been the CIP since.
A long time.
2012.
So, all right.
Yeah.
All right?
Anything else?
Nope, I think that's good. Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Can't cast it to the Scott Nelson honorary televisions, huh?
Yeah.
We gotta, you have a school along, so when he's.
I think you, I think you have a name tag on there somewhere. All right, anything else, Michael, with that, or Justin?
I think on Kelly Avenue, good there.
Okay.
Just maybe one other update that wasn't included in the report, but just to follow up for your guys' awareness. The gentleman that was in here, the first meeting in July, I did meet with him on site, just kind of reviewed that site area, just understood more in depth of what, what he was discussing, bringing to you guys. Pretty good meeting there. Still have some research to do on my end, but we'll follow up with him and you guys as we, as we get more information on that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Hey, when we turn the wastewater treatment plan on for the first time.
Yeah.
That water that comes out of it's clean enough to drink, right? Theoretically. I would like a glass made so our mayor can.
I probably would take the first.
He wants to be mayor worse than I thought.
Too, too environmental standard, so.
Clean to go back into the creek.
Clean enough to go into the creek, not to drink. Somebody told me it's clean enough to drink when, when we were on that tour.
Rachel, probably.
Oh, Rachel did, yes. Okay, and she, she. I'm gonna follow up with her on that.
I am the old, well, Neil Daryl's the oldest, we probably have to send him in first. That's how this deal works, Gerald, thank you.
We didn't know that was part of this.
Yeah, that wasn't part of the deal. All right, good point, John, thank you. All right, I see you've got an action item on here, Michael?
Correct. Change order number three for the Western Avenue Rig Construction Project to D and G Concrete in the amount of $612.51. This is for flooding to, traffic operations to deliver gravel for the area base. It was determined to use it to maintain public safety as opposed to driving those loaded trucks through residential areas, whether it be Rude or Crestman Trail, and instead back it from Western North into the construction area. So this is up the DOT rate, researched it and it's, 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 if I didn't know what, what we typically see them playing.
All right. Action on this one.
I just got a quick question and I'm reading this. So the fiscal impact is in 18, so this is like a per, a per load price?
No, $612 total.
It says approval of this change order, am I reading, I'm at the bottom here.
It's talking about all the change orders.
That's the total of the change.
Oh, okay.
We've had, yeah.
So we've got a credit of $6,700, $9,000, a $15,000, a $612.
Got it, okay.
Never mind that. Eighteen thousand.
That's the total change from the original contract.
Yeah.
And this is change order number four, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
As we've already on, Sean, we're going to give you guys these as, as things come up, as change documented, be clear and thorough with our project. And known to know, the only thing that we did not include on change order was some of the asphalt pavement that we removed for that temporary roadway. So that will come out again.
All right.
Most approved, change order number four to D and G Concrete Construction for $612.51.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Project?
Yes.
Shilling. All right, you got anything else, Michael?
That is all I had.
I, I have a question on Western regarding, this makes me think of,
Yeah.
there was a concern brought up about silt fence. There's noted that it's, it's installed with, on the portion that appears to be the state's project to like ACE, but the project, which appears to be the city's project south of that, doesn't have silt fence. Is that because it wasn't a requirement in the construction docs? Is it something that the contractor has oversight?
There is silt fence installed on the north side of the project at the ultimate outlet where those culverts are. In review of the site, everything flows in, so that was all a ditch system, everything goes in, and then we'll go north. So at that point, we're making sure we protect the ultimate outlet at the end there. As construction progresses and as there's the potential for runoff to enter private property, specifically maybe in front of there of Growcox, ACE, or Dairy Queen, we will get some installed. Did review that with the contractor today, to have a plan in place and some of that installed.
Can I ask, so, and I appreciate the round, I don't even know what the heck this stuff is, I'm just asking out of curiosity. So do we need it or do we not need it?
We, we do need it.
It's required, actually.
So
It's required, we don't, okay.
The permit for that, we have a stormwater erosion control permit, right? And so that permit is to limit the discharge of sediment from the project, so, right? So if you have a smoke like this, right, and this is going down to private property and your work is being up here, you're going to have some silt fence there, that's going to catch that sediment, you know, from that run, right? So if you go out on site tomorrow, I'd encourage you go on that north side there. You'll see all those culverts that go under the church and then the private property, and then there'll be silt fence right there. That's blocking everything, especially after some of those rainfalls. So that's what we did on phase one, analyzing it on phase two, making sure we're good. Most of that stuff's all great, and then the project site, we're going to the storm sewer. That's at the contractor's risk at that point, once it gets into the site, if they didn't want it to go through that storm sewer that they already installed, that's still going to get caught down at the ultimate outlet. What we would require before project acceptance is making sure all that storm sewer is clean prior to taking all that erosion to come off. So once they get some of that topsoil on that phase one, you'll see some erosion control measures getting placed along that back of the curb. Right now, things are just going to fill up with water, there's going to be no, no erosion essentially, so.
Help me understand and explain the concern that one might have the northeast, more northwest corner of Hare Hartford Real Estate LLC, where there's like a detention, retention pond in that corner, and that, that contractor has pushed that sod back into what appears to be a, you know, a catch basin for, for excessive rainfall. And there's no, doesn't appear to be any, any silt fence or anything to prevent that erosion to fill in that, that area.
I'll have to review that one on site. Or specifically
So north of the, north of their Dairy Queen?
Yeah.
As you're, in, as you're approaching, if I'm sitting at Opalane, because I've left Dairy Queen and went north on the
Yep, curb.
On the, um, private
Fronty Road.
Central Valley Church sign is.
There's this church, yes, there's a church sign there, correct. Sitting there in Opalane, looking west, there's a, there's a catch basin for excessive rain runoff. There's also a pile of fresh dirt that's spilling into that area.
I'll take a look at that first, then we'll move on. Can you try this and then follow up with me?
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, okay, yeah, I see now, yeah, okay. I wasn't sure where you were at. That's, Miller's on the other side.
Miller's north of, well, Gettino is actually north of that, huh?
Yeah, 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 gotcha.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Travis.
All right. Tony?
Mr. Mayor, it's been suggested to me by one of the council people that if I have concerns, I need to come to the city council meeting and be on record and videotaped with, videotaped with my concerns. So that's why I'm here tonight. I have a question for our city attorney first, and the engineer second.
What is this stuff, we're past public, what is this about?
This is dealing with Western Avenue project. So part of the engineer's report. Down the question, where are you private property, designing a construction site? What is the law concerning easements that are required to store construction materials or to push back topsoil and dirt on the property? Do you need permission from, or consent from property owners? That require ease, assigned easement? It would probably be preferred, but if they're, and sometimes they're working in an area and they need to move quickly if they've got permission for the property. And would that, would your, as the attorney, would you say that needs to be written permission from the property owner? Preferred again. To have an in writing or if you know you're going to be disturbing their property during the construction. Okay. Do we have signed permission for signed temporary easements for any of the property owners along Western Avenue project?
I talked to property owners along Western Avenue today, asked them specifically after you gave me a call yesterday.
Okay.
I've been talking with these guys and specifically asking the questions if they've had any concern with the material in front of their businesses.
So
And I asked that question specifically because if they had concern, the contractor would have been instructed to move said material today.
Okay, so
There was no material moved based on the feedback from what I was providing.
Do you have property there?
I do not have property here, Cindy. So this is, is a business person who, my business is affected. But in fact, all this dirt was pushed back onto property that we maintain and has now taken income out of my pocket. None of the clients were aware the dirt was going to be pushed onto their property before the dirt was pushed onto their property. I talked with every one of my clients along there. None of them knew dirt was going to be pushed across the property line onto their property. And as Justin just said, he went and talked to them today, which is a week after it was pushed onto their property, to see if they have any concern. And so I want to know, legally, you have to have permission or an easement or something. Interestingly enough, the DOT end of this project, there are stakes out all the way up there, all along there, all marking temporary easements on the entire project. The state has temporary easements on their side of this project. On the city side of the project, there are no easements. There was, obviously, there's, here in Busan, talking to him today, there was no advanced permission asked. The dirt went onto their property, and then after the fact, they came in and said, do you have a problem with the dirt there? Well, for most of the businesses, they don't have a problem with the dirt there probably, until after we get the severe thunderstorm that's going to hit her in about a half an hour, and those piles wash down, and the parking lots are full of mud tomorrow because there's no silt fence alongside the pile of dirt that they pushed all the way up to the curb. That's why I'm here then. And it's suggested to me, I've visited with council people about it, and it's suggested that if I have concerns, I need to come to the meeting and I need to go in public and be in videotape with them. I am, because I think there's some real deficiencies in communication and legal process that's been done here on this project. And I say, and the bottom line is, the other side of my concern is a concerned taxpayer. This happening, in my mind, I could say one way or the other, has set the city up for a possible lawsuit. Because that dirt was pushed on the private property without written permission or without permission or without notice. And any one of those property owners could come along and file a lawsuit for infringing upon the private property, my recount.
I mean, and they're probably going to show damage.
It's, show damage, but
Tony, did you, did you consider saying to any of these property owners? Have you called the mayor or, or your city council person? Or did you take it upon yourself to be the voice of the city? Because it sounds like you took upon yourself to be the voice of the city. Not one of these people has called me. Has any of these people called anyone at this table?
No.
So we can help when we know. I know you talked with Justin. I know you talked with Justin, because I had him call you. Right?
Yes, he did. I'm not, I'm not the spokesman for them, and I'm speaking for the city. I'm here as a citizen of this community, seeing what's been happening there and saying, it's not right.
So Justin, do we need to go see all these?
I think we need to again, you know.
I asked Justin this today, Tony, and he said he went and talked.
I don't think, pardon, I don't think a single one of those people are upset in any matter because there's dirt pushed onto their property.
Are you the only one that's upset?
It appears that I might be the only one that's upset at the moment.
Thank you.
Okay, but my point to this is, process and procedure legally was not done. Justin admitted, he did not talk to any of them, if they have a problem with the dirt on their property till today, and it's been there for a week. If I was building a house next to Michelle, Michelle has her house, and your yard is all there. And my contractor comes in and decides to dig a basement, and he pushes the dirt over on Michelle's yard. Do you think Michelle gets mad? Don't know. But if there's no permission and no easement brought ahead of time, she has all right to get all over me because we, because we put dirt on her property.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Did we vote on change order number three?
We think we did.
Yep, we did.
All right.
There are any concerns from the citizens, please bring those to me and let me know. There's concerns about communication to, to the residents, to the city. We have actively been trying to keep our project website on debate, as well as providing updates here just on construction progress. There's also some comments made just on the timeline that it took to get phase one done. We did pull together today's analysis, I believe, I forget the number now, I couldn't share that with you. There were significant write-in on that phase one, most of that time coming in the middle of the week in that half inch or plus rainfall, which really affects this construction. There's a lot of other businesses that can still stay operational with that. So that's some of the delays that we saw as a city, as an engineering team, as a contractor team. Nobody would like to see that phase one take as long as it did. The contractor doesn't get paid unless he gets work done. That construction schedule that they're telling us for phase two is going to be approximately five weeks, weather dependent. Same thing again, if they're not going to work out, they're not going to pay. I believe all those business owners do have my contact information. We had several meetings leading up to the project where we discussed a lot of meetings on site with them. Again, if there's any concerns on their end, please bring it to me. I mean, I'm here to help you guys and help those guys, number one, just get into them, understanding the business operations, super passionate about this project and have it go well. So it's a little tough to me to hear some of those comments tonight. And if there's any direction to you guys, I would definitely welcome that, so.
But your conversations that you've had with the business owners, they have not complained about any of that?
No, no, I mean, there, there was some concerns that were brought up, you know, on the speaking on that front of the road, which I greatly appreciate, and that's one thing we've asked all along. If you guys see some of this stuff, please bring it up. We do have folks on staff that are on site, they're, they're one of the contractors there. Contractors do find ourselves, we're not going to be there, because I don't want to bill you guys. Those business owners see a lot. So if you see something, bring it up to us, and we'll make the necessary changes or try to implement it, right? If we fail to do that, then that's on us, and that's where we can definitely get some criticism from you guys. So hold us accountable, that's necessary, and let us know if we need to adjust. But at the end of the day, like I said, we want to see this project be successful. You know, between myself, other staff members, we've definitely come to this project and make sure we hear every, every spot, but so.
I want to emphasize the point you said about if there's no construction on site.
Yes.
You aren't sending somebody out to serve, to, to run the meter, so to speak, and run the bill up. So we have to remember as a city council that ISG isn't just going to be hanging out, out there, right? And so thank you for that.
Yeah.
You have a, essentially the dollar amount we're paying ISG to supervise the project is a, you could maybe look at it as a not to exceed.
Yeah.
And if you can get in and get out and be more efficient, the total amount built to the city will be less.
I drive that project every day, just to see how it's going, see if science looks right, everything like that. If I see an issue, or I bring it up to Tim, I was in at Tammons the other day, and the lady didn't say anything to me that, she just said, oh, I didn't know the road was going to be up. Next thing I heard, that's going to, I said, it's going to get built up some, it's going to be up a little bit, but it's not. And that's all the issues she said to me, she didn't say anything about dirt piles or anything like that.
Right.
Rain, that is going to be one thing I would still swing out and just check erosion control and stuff like that. We understand construction sites dynamic, everything's moving, so still there's some checks, but
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, let's move on, Craig, let's hear from you.
Just a quick couple of things, like Michael said, the slurry seal. We did put notices on all the doors that are, people are going to be affected by this slurry seal for the next couple of days. I'll start Thursday and Friday. The contractor himself will hang a door hanger on each individual house of that road is getting done that day, or the following day. So I've, I've taken half a dozen phone calls already tonight, just people wondering how they're going to get in and out and stuff like that, so.
We also have it on our website and on the Facebook. We just found out this morning that confirmed those were the days, so we put it out today.
Not a new project, I mean, we, this is probably the 50th, 20th year we've done it, so it's, nothing new, we're used to it, so. Sewer, the pump that we ordered from DSG, we thought it was going to be about four weeks, it's actually came, arrived today. So we'll pick them up and have it on hand. Then parks, we did get, we ended up changing out the sewer line, they hit it when they are putting posts in, and it was clay pipe down below, so we got the clay pipe moved out away from where the building's going to be, so that if we have an issue with it, we ran the camera through, it looked good. We would have replaced it, but we were probably to wreck the tree doing it, so we thought we'll just camera it, make sure it's good, looks good, and then we got PVC coming out of the building far enough, so if we have to change in the future, we can. Plumber's planning on being there tomorrow, he's actually called me tonight, he said he's going to bring his trailer down there, so he'll get started on that, and I got the concrete guy lined up after that, so. So we're going to be moving ahead of that project, and just been kind of a busy, busy couple of weeks with all the projects, and then start up our wastewater facility too, so we've been trying, Greg, and trying to patch it down and everything else too, so. That's all I got, my report, updates anyway.
Back to the Swenson Park and the softball tournament. Can you make sure we run the, I wonder if we shouldn't run the mosquito sprayer out there?
Yeah, Jess does it every time it goes out spraying, but I'll make sure that we hit it prior.
Hit, yeah.
And then we're also, I don't know if it deteriorated last week or not, but we are also going to shoot tempo on the grass.
Okay.
Tempo's kind of a barrier, it stays in, lasts about thirty days if you don't have a lot of rain.
Yeah.
And what it does, it just keeps bugs on the grass, so.
Okay.
The mosquitoes, we do it in parks all the time, so.
Okay.
They're going to come on you, huh?
Anything else?
I was just curious, what's the name of the chemical or the product, I guess, we use for the bug spray?
Yep.
Yep, all right, we'll chat later.
I will have to ask, I will have to ask.
It's a spray, it's in a bottle. Just curious, does it have a mosquito pitcher on it?
I was, I can't remember.
A Betrin?
We get it through Van Deese.
Okay, just curious.
Why are you asking three eyes?
Yeah, right.
Jess kind of does all that, so I don't really, I just give no key to order chemicals.
Is it from mosquitoes, is it in a Malapian base?
I don't think it is that anymore.
Okay.
I was just curious, so.
No worries.
I thought pretty smart about that.
Oh, man.
I know big words like
It's in your old X words, sorry.
Malapian. All right, anything for Craig, anything else? Alright, anything for Craig, anything else? Alright, well, we know Karen's, it's gonna be fast, Karen, go!
I did have something about parks, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, hold on.
I just could, it was parks, it was like parks. Has there been any talk about replacing the city park at Lion, the sign for Lions Park?
There was talk about it a few different times, but nothing's, we just painted it that one time, and that was all that's got done.
Looking pretty rugged, rugged.
It's probably one of the original ones.
Yeah, it's, I agree.
Historic, antique.
It may be protected under, maybe it's, it's on the historical registry? You thinking?
Let's just knock it down someday and put a new one up.
We could, we could look at it. I know the guy's painting it.
I'm gonna have to go take a look.
I need to go look at it, though.
It's from eighteen seventy-nine, but it looks great.
Alright, okay, Karen?
Yes, my report's in the package. Don't really have anything to add, unless you have questions.
Karen, do we have a, an idea of where we are at in terms of our budget so far this fiscal year, from what we were projected, where we're at?
There's reports in your box.
They're in the box.
Under financial, financial.
Yep.
There's an expenditure report and a revenue report, and it gives you year-to-date percentage of budget, what's left in the budget.
You update that on a, what, a monthly basis?
Yeah, it can get up every month.
So...
And there, historically in there too, so.
Got you, okay.
All months of the year.
Can I mention that meeting? Because she does the calendar on here.
Oh, yeah, the, the one that we're gonna do for the TIF, yeah.
You guys probably got the email on the twenty-ninth of August, before the planning and zoning meeting we're having, uh...
July, you mean, or is it August?
July, July twenty-ninth, on that Tuesday night, we're having the gentleman who does quite a chunk of the TIFs in South Dakota coming to give us a TIF training session for an hour. He says his PowerPoint is not very long, but questions usually are really long. And we had a visit with him the other day, and he said he'd be more than happy to come and do that, so.
That will be at six?
Six o'clock, and then the P&amp;Z meets at seven. So the nice thing is, we kinda have to put a limit on it, because we gotta be done by seven, so those guys can meet. But we're gonna invite P&amp;Z, all of the council, and, okay. Just wanted to bring that up. I don't think we have that on the agenda at any place else, did we?
No.
No? Okay. Yeah.
I'll send out a reminder before, well, during the agenda, because there'll be forums there, and I'll send out.
I'm flying over Minneapolis today this evening, so we'll see if I make it.
Yeah, alright. Anything else for Karen? If not, we'll move on to Teresa's report.
Um, just a couple of updates, talking about the wastewater treatment facility, I just wanna point out, ISG is generously, they're gonna donate a plaque for when the new building gets up, they're gonna put it on Operation Building. I've seen a couple samples, we'll have to go through and decide what it looks like or whatnot, but they're doing that at their cost, donating it to the city, so I'll thank them for that.
Ah.
They're not just billing us for everything.
Does it have the words Memorial Hoop Planet?
Just curious.
Memorial, whatever you want.
Yeah, it's a flag.
Memorial Hoop Planet?
Yeah.
Maybe?
Um, for the next meeting, I'm trying to working on updating ordinance to change our election date, like we talked about, so that'll be at the next meeting.
On that, I don't know that we're gonna need to do an ordinance, because it's just gonna require council every year before January fourteenth, needs to determine if they're gonna have a June, November election.
They're gonna determine every year.
Yeah, it's the way the new statute's written.
Yeah, there was a, was that in that municipal league letter today?
Yeah, that's Sarah Rankin's.
Yeah, I seen, I read that, and I thought it, because in even year, it says it's this date, and odd year, it says it's...
You get a pick every year.
We get the choice, because every year you won't have a November one, yeah.
Yeah, it seems, yeah.
To reduce...
November, I think we're gonna look at going to November.
I would, I would only just, in my mind, I would think June, actually, just because it's before budgeting. So if there's huge issues going on, and you decide to take a petition out, you get on in June, you're not dealing with a crap show of a, of a budget somebody put forward three months prior.
We picked, we thought November, because if I get on in June, and I'm not versed in budgets...
And the first meeting is...
We have to prove that.
Your election is June, you'll be coming on in July.
I, I agree.
We're gonna budget in August, you're not gonna be really up to speed.
That's why, that's why we kinda talked November.
Yeah, I mean, I would just...
Yeah, I, I hear you, there's, yeah.
I don't think there's, yeah, the wrong way to look at it.
No, you're, you're right.
Yeah, you can look at it either, your point makes sense too.
Yeah.
But when we first talked about it, we thought, boy.
No, I get it, and I knew I wasn't here, so, yes.
Would it be crazy to have somebody get on, and they get on in July in their third meeting? Oh, by the way.
That's what it would be, too.
You gotta know all this stuff.
That is a sign, yeah.
Yeah.
And you could possibly depending upon your...
I mean, we'll see how Nerral does, he's gonna, he's gonna be our, he's gonna be as good, he's our Diddy page, we'll see how he does this year.
Exactly.
It's, it's written very oddly, I'll just tell you.
Yeah.
Because the odd number of years, you're gonna decide whether you're gonna, whether you wanna have a joint election in the school district, and then if you do, it's either gonna be the first Tuesday after the first Monday in June, or the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November.
You wanna get going?
Well, I mean, we're gonna be at the hail, it'd be nice.
Oh, yeah, she wants to be at the hail story.
Let's get the hail out of here.
Alright, what else you got, Teresa?
Anything that's different, we already mentioned the meeting on the twenty-ninth. I just wanna tell you, I did receive today a code on a new server, as I put in my updates, we had electricity go out here, it damaged our server, it's gonna be about seventy-three hundred dollars, and we didn't have it in budget, but it's needed, so, I mean, it is what it is. The new server, though, it'll, we actually have two servers right now, it's gonna combine into one, it'll give us triple the storage capacity, our speeds will increase greatly, I, I mean, it's, it's needed, it'll definitely be a better system. It has onsite backup and offsite backup, so, I mean, it comes with a lot of features that we don't have now. It'll, it'll be a better system for us, so just wanna give you a hint that that's gonna be coming in. And that's what I have, unless you have questions about, I'm very bored.
Does it have any kind of a protection to prevent this from happening to the new one, as far as like UPS or surge protection?
What it has, is it has, what did he call that? It has full disaster recovery solution on it, so basically, if it kinda happens again, if the hardware gets damaged, it'll be very similar to what we have now, we'll be able to still work without the hard server, and basically work off the cloud, which we're doing now, but, kind of the same thing.
Alright, okay.
Okay.
Alright.
But having UPS ahead of that would make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
For a couple hundred bucks.
That's, that's their backup plan. What I'm, what I'm relying is, we need a plan to prevent it from happening.
Yeah, big, big surge protector or some sort of...
It's on, it's on surge protectors and all that thing, I mean, it's, it's got the features on the front end, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hard to control.
Yeah, we...
Contact your local electrician.
Yeah, we used to run ours through a surge battery backup, that's what we had on ours.
And I, we do have it, and we have it, the one we have now, so I mean, we'll, we'll have that too on all, but, yeah. A flood incident, because everything else came right back on, but some of that got damaged, so.
Alright, any other questions for Teresa? Alright, hearing none, we have no old business, we're gonna move on to new business. First up, review, approve the employee manual update to section six, health, safety, and security, this is in regard to the House Bill twelve eighteen that passed, that allows city employees to carry firearms.
Requires the city to allow?
Requires, excuse me, requires the city to allow employees to carry.
Motion to approve the presented changes.
I can start.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowlen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Haracheck?
Yes.
Shilling?
Yes.
Alright, next up, if we want, let's table that one.
Motion to table.
Or motion to table.
And do we have a second?
Last guy started talking, got it.
Second. Okay, this is the fireworks discussion, we'll table it till the next meeting. We'll vote, Shilling?
Yes.
Haracheck?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowlen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Alright, and set date for twenty-two-five budget review meeting.
Motion to set the date for the twenty-twenty-six budget review meeting for August twenty-seventh, that's my proposal.
Second.[1654.33]